One has had an opportunity to review for tonight. However, there is one proposed change, and I will read it. It states that a commission member asked staff for clarification on grandfathering criteria for extensions for subdivision plans. Specifically, given that applicable ordinances and regulations have changed, can a -- is this the right one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Can a preliminary plan continue to be grandfathered from the provisions of SB 236 if the project has not met the state's two-part test to claim a vested right? Staff will take a close look at the question of preliminary plan approvals and extensions, the validity of the plan, and how it applies to subdivisions under SB 236, and report back to the commission to ensure we follow the law. So since we do not have those minutes to approve tonight, I'm suggesting a motion to include this amendment so that when we do get the minutes, it will already be a complete set. So can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shertler and Mr. Bowling. The motion has been made to incorporate the proposed amendment into April 9 minutes so that when we receive them on May 7, the minutes will be complete and ready for approval. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and the amendment will be incorporated. Technical difficulties?
Never. There we go.
I can just start, and you can catch up later.
Okay.
I'm kidding.
Thank you.
My name's Kent Hastings, and I'm with the Mason Springs Conservancy. On February 26, Commissioner Dya asked if a planning commission member who voted with the majority on a case as being appealed to Board of Appeals could participate in that appeal. To date, no one has really tried to answer that specific question for her. I think she deserves an answer, and I'd like to hear the answer myself, being sort of interested in how this process works and who can do what to who. Counsel and the zoning officer have both admitted that the zoning ordinance doesn't cover the scenario where you find yourselves now. That's because the zoning officer didn't deal, didn't agree with your decision, which makes it difficult for him to represent you before the Board of Appeals. That was the underlying issue, I'm sure, for the question was asked, how could someone from a majority participate to make your case before the Board of Appeals? Okay. The Board of Appeals has solved the problem of not using county attorney assets by getting a county attorney assigned from outside, so you don't have an associate county attorney now advising the Board of Appeals either on their day-to-day work or for the court appeals. Also, the zoning officer was represented by outside counsel for Washington's discovery. So there's another case where it's possible to get outside counsel if you're not confident that what's going on is correct. At your April 9 meeting, Commissioner Vial asked about the minutes. They clearly didn't address either Commissioner Dya's question or the underlying issue of who is going to represent the Planning Commission before the Board of Appeals. I don't have the minutes, well, you don't have them either right now, but what I got from that discussion is that was an accurate assessment, this part. He was advised that your counsel and the zoning officer would do it, because that was the agreement during the reconsideration discussion. However, I've made a thorough review of the video, and I don't find that discussion or consensus or anything in the video, so I'm not sure how that fits into the minutes or what kind of changes you might be planning to make to fold it into the minutes. As far as I'm concerned, the video is a rule. The video tells everything. The minutes are kind of coarse, and sometimes they're very complete. Well, I'll see, my time's about up. I didn't forget about Ms. Shertler's questions about the court appeal status. Certainly, the council's treatment of that subject at your last meeting didn't cover very many bases. My opinion is it was inadequate, and I will try to help tell that story better starting next time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Okay. The next order of business is our Ironside Escape XPN, excuse me, 05-0015, presented by Ms. Heather Kelly and Mr. John Mudd.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Heather Kelly with the Planning Division, just going to bring us to this point in our slideshow this evening. Thank you again. Item 7.01 on this evening's agenda concerning Ironside Escape XPN 05-0015, request for extension of time approval, is a request by the consultant Lorenzi Dodd and Ginnell, Inc., on behalf of the owner JHLEO LLC, for an extension of the approval of the Ironside Escape preliminary plan. Now, just very briefly, go through the slides here. We have a location map illustrating the location of the project off of Maryland 425, also known as Ironside Road. And we have a zoning map illustrating the agricultural conservation zoning of the property. And we also have an aerial map. And we have an illustration of the currently approved preliminary subdivision plan. Just a little history, the preliminary subdivision plan for Ironside Escape, which was then known as Albion, was originally approved by the Planning Commission on December 12, 2005. The current owner, JHLEO, acquired the property in July of 2015. Most recently, the Planning Commission approved a major revision to this plan, and this was on September 12, 2016. In accordance with the subdivision regulations, Section 25, the applicant is requesting an extension of the original approval to continue towards completion of the project. And I'll just give a little bit of history also, as far as the staff's recommendation that we provided in the summary that the Planning Commission received. Considering the nature of the major revision that was approved by the Planning Commission in 2016, staff is recommending an extension of four years from the date of that approval until September 12, 2020. The approval by the Planning Commission in 2016 was based on a full review by the technical review committee, which was consistent with the review of a new plan. The project continues to comply with all current regulatory requirements, including adequate public facilities. And also, just as a side note, once the supporting materials for the agenda item were posted for public viewing on the Planning Commission's board doc website, the Planning Commission did submit several follow-up questions. Those were regarding the applicability of Senate Bill 236, also a question about the minor revision to the plan that was approved in 2017. There was a question about some inconsistency with the measurements of the diameter of the cul-de-sac, and also a question about the original superior design analysis that went with the Planning Commission's approval in 2016. So staff provided responses to all those items. We did post those questions and answers on board docs. Of course, we're here to discuss them this evening as well. And at this time, Mr. Mudd, Assistant Chief of Planning, will now present a status of adequate public facilities for the project at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Again, for the record, my name is John Mudd, and I'm the Assistant Chief of Planning. Very briefly, I'll run through the APF section, which you've become fairly used to hearing. Important to understand, as part of this extension request for this plan, we require the developer to prepare a brand-new, up-to-date traffic impact analysis, the results of which are contained in detail within your summary. And I'll simply hit the highlights, which represent the results of this brand-new traffic study. There were two primary intersections studied as part of this effort. The first is the intersection at Maryland 425. We find, the study finds, that at this intersection, a level of service B is maintained as a result of the future condition for this project, as well as there is reserved capacity available in all movements at this intersection. So the two-part test for this intersection was passed. The standard for levels of service within the zone is you must achieve a B or better rating. So in the case of this intersection, it's shown to meet standard in terms of suitability. The second intersection was at Maryland 225 at DeMatha Court. Again, this will be an unsignaled intersection in the future condition. The results of this study found that the level of service would be held at a Level A, which is, again, better than the standard of B. So in that case, we find that intersection will meet an acceptable level of service, including the function of reserve capacity for all the movements. The other two components are link analyses. The first was done between Maryland Route 6 and DeMatha Court on Maryland 425. The road link analysis demonstrated that both in the AM and PM peak hours would maintain a 6% capacity of this roadway, which is well below the standard of 80%, which is the number we simply recognize as you're starting to have a problem. So 6% versus 80%, we've got a long way to go in terms of road capacity. The other road link is Maryland Route 6 east of Maryland 425. And again, the study found that the road link currently operates at 5% in the AM peak and 6% in the PM peak, again, well below the 80% threshold necessary to address inadequacy. So those are the four standards. The traffic study has confirmed that all these road links and intersections will meet applicable APF standards. And just as a reminder, the remnants of APF include APF water, and certainly in the applicant's detailed summary of activity that the project has gone through, they are very close to the actual issuance of the groundwater appropriation permit, which they feel will happen this September. In terms of schools, we note that the project presently has 19 school allocations applied to the project, and it is expected, at least from the applicant's point of view, that later this week, the project may obtain the additional two seats it would need to complete the project. With regard to rural fire suppression, the same condition as the original is still at play, as the project is located within the four-mile round-trip driving distance to an existing approved water source known as Source 8-3 at Stenets Gravel. Again, right away, and frontage improvements are not applicable, as the project has frontage on a state highway, and secondary access is not applicable, because there's less than 1,000 trips per day generated by the project. So again, just a quick recap for APF standards. Again, to denote that this, these are results based on a brand-new traffic study. We're asking all of these extension projects to do that, so this board can have the latest and greatest information in terms of potential APF impacts as you consider these extension requests. And I think that's pretty much it.
I'm going to conclude my presentation. I could, I could go on and on about this, but I'm sure there's questions that probably just deserve to be answered right off the bat, so we'll just.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And now we'll open it up for questions. Ms. Shertler?
Actually, Ms. Shertler, I'm very concerned, and I have a motion here, that a question that I asked at the last meeting was not adequately addressed, and it was, it was not specific to this project, but specific to extension requests. And so I actually have a motion that the Planning Commission defer a vote on the request for extension of preliminary subdivision plan approval, Ironside Escape XPN 05-0015, until the county attorney's office provides the commission a legal opinion on whether, A, the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, SB 236, is an applicable ordinance to be considered in evaluating a request for a preliminary subdivision approval extension, and, B, a preliminary subdivision plan can continue to be, whether a preliminary subdivision plan can continue to be grandfathered from the provisions of SB 236 if the project has not met the state's two-part test to claim a vested right?
Thank you. I'm just trying to catch up to you.
Okay. The motion has been made that the Planning Commission defer a vote on the request for extension of preliminary subdivision plan approval, Ironside Escape, number XPN 05-001, until the county attorney's office provides the commission a legal opinion on whether, A, the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, commonly known as SB 236, is applicable to be considered in evaluating this request for a preliminary, or any request, I guess, for extensions, for a preliminary subdivision approval, and, B, that a preliminary subdivision plan can continue to be grandfathered from the provisions of SB 236 if the project has not met the state's two-part test to claim a vested right. Is there any discussion? Let me have a second.
I'm sorry. I thought of a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Vial? Thank you, Ms. Shertler and Mr. Vial. Now, is there any discussion?
Yes. I would like the planning director to explain to the commission that wouldn't they have had to meet this criteria, grandfathering, at the time of the discussion of the preliminary subdivision plan?
Yes. And in fact, staff has put together a response to this very question, and I believe it was emailed out today, regrettably, and not prior. However, we are prepared to discuss that this evening. We've discussed it with the county attorney's office, we've discussed it internally, and we believe that the answer is in our response that we've shared, so we're perfectly happy to discuss it now.
Okay. Well.
Okay. Some motion?
We're in discussion then.
Right. We're in discussion, right.
And my concern is, I did get a chance to read this, although it did come very late, so I haven't had, but it doesn't, you know, what, what the answer was is the project would remain, remain exempt as long as its preliminary subdivision plan remains alive. Well, what we're discussing is whether or not to keep a preliminary plan alive. And while I understand that, yes, the preliminary approval needs, needs to meet a specific deadline, and I actually really regret that this is happening while we actually have a project, because it's, it's not specific to this project, it's specific to the process. So one of the things we have to determine is whether to keep it alive. And if you have a plan that was grandfathered from SB 236 because they got their, their application in before October 2016, then the plan was grandfathered. But what we're looking at, and what we're charged to look at with, with extensions, is whether or not changes in the zoning would affect it going forward. And the zoning has clearly changed since then. SB 236 is now the law. So I, and I, you know, and I under, you know, and I understand, I just would like, as, as Mr. Kai Ziegler said, words matter. And the words that I'm seeing here aren't specific, I mean, I, you know, a legal opinion, just so we're not doing something wrong. I, you know, we've been overturned twice already on our decisions, and I would really like to be sure we're on the side of the angels with doing that. So that's, and again, when I looked, I did look at the Sustainable Growth SB 236 implementation guidance, and again, they talk there about being grandfathered for a preliminary plan, but that's, you know, we know the plan was grandfathered, but what we're looking at is extending the life of that plan. And should we look at?
Well, the, the criteria, and I'll, I'll let our staff give more details, but the, the main point is that they purposely built into SB 236 provisions for which projects that were already in motion to have a grandfathered status. And so what, they purposely put that into the law to allow these projects to continue. So the tier mapping is sort of another layer that's outside of zoning. It has criteria that applies to zoning, but essentially, the tier mapping, you know, has its criteria, and within its criteria, it had sort of the grandfathered provisions. So to be clear, if it wasn't intended for projects to meet a particular test, they wouldn't have included those provisions in there. This, so they did that. They included a test. This, the two-step process was something that occurred and was, the second step had to be completed in 2016. That, this project did that, had an approved preliminary plan as the second part of that process. And essentially, the project now is subject to our subdivision regulations and the extension process. And the, the purpose for the extension process essentially is to make sure that projects don't sit out there as dead weight. They don't get an approval and then just sit out there forever for the someday to come along. They have to actually make progress. And so with the time extensions, the whole purpose behind that is so that we, they make that progress. It's an incentive. Otherwise, the project will expire. We'll get to this point in time and say, you know, they haven't done anything, and so therefore, it doesn't seem like it makes sense to extend it. The staff report, as you saw this time, was very robust, went very deep, looked at every single section that we review for when we do a preliminary plan approval, let alone a time extension. And in doing so, it is, it is sort of separate and apart from the SB 236 process, and they've met the test in terms of grandfathering and staff size to get them to this point. And then secondarily, for the time extension process, completely separate and apart process to keep a project moving along, we believe that they've met that test as well, which is why our staff report is recommending approval of the time extension. But in terms of the difference, or the, has the project met the test, the answer in staff size is yes, from the SB 236 side and the time extension side.
Because I have spent a couple of hours going through the 55-page document of SB 236 and the grandfathering, can you, can you show me where it says that? Because I can't find it. I, and I, you know, I'm not a lawyer. That's why I'm looking for legal advice. I, I, I mean, it would be great to have it written down so it's clear, because the state does have a two-part test. I'm sorry?
I was just asking if she wanted to address that.
You know, and because the state has a two-part test about grandfathering.
Right. Which they've met.
Well, no, the state's, the two-part test the state has for being vested includes...
Well, vested and grandfathering are two different terms.
Well, in the comp plan, when they talk about grandfathering, they reference vesting, the state's determination of vesting, and I haven't found, is there a state have a, have a definition of grandfathering that is different than their definition of vesting?
The tier process under SB 236 had a specific criteria to meet for a subdivision project to continue through and be grandfathered. This project in our eyes has met that test. In terms of tonight, we're here to talk about a time extension, and the terms for a time extension are very clear, and we believe they've met that test as well. If this was a project that has done nothing since it got its preliminary plan approval to meet that second part of the two-step process under SB 236, we would certainly say something different in the staff report. But because not only did they meet the test under SB 236, but they've done their diligence, we've got, we, we, last time that we met, we talked about the myriad of projects that are on, in the, it's been called the pipeline by many. And there's, there are numbers, large numbers in each category. One of them are the projects that have done nothing. And this time extension process is to essentially ensure that projects are doing something. And you can see by the detail on the staff report, they've got Plattsin, they've got infrastructure permits that are tentatively approved, they've done all the things to get to the point where they can record lots, and thus, this time extension process is no longer necessary. And so...
Excuse me, Jason. I appreciate your, the, the detailed explanation, but I feel like we've got a terminology issue that needs to be resolved, and I think a lot of it is the, the legal, the legally operative meaning of some of the words. We just used the word vesting, we just used the words grandfathering, and those have specific legal associations with those.
Okay.
So what I understand is that Ms. Shertler is looking for a legal opinion, which would go ahead and reconcile what those two words and their legally operative definitions would be, and that may be helpful to help straighten out where it is we're going. I hear exactly what you're saying, but I, it's a terminology issue. That's what I feel.
Okay. If I may, I think, I think the other thing we need to consider, however, is if we're going to pull back, we've already written in here a deadline for the developer, four years out from the previous approval. And if we're going to pull back and wait for definitions and, and not hear this tonight, I think they deserve additional time at the other end as well.
Well, they can keep going.
Yeah. They're not bound to stop.
They're not, they're not.
I understand that, but they're, the clock is ticking, and they still have a deadline. They still have an end of, end of extension deadline, and if we're pulling back and not giving them their extension...
Is it my understanding, though, that there's no stop-work order?
Well, I would agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
However, they don't, they don't know now whether or not they have an extension. They've already paid for school seats, they're, they're putting all this money in the ground and in, in, in all the background work that they're doing, and frankly, if I'm in their, their seat, and I don't know whether or not I'm going to get this extension, I'm not putting another dime in it.
I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate the viewpoint. All I'm saying is that even if this had not appeared before us tonight, they would still be working. So they're not really bound, as far as I'm, as I know. Am I correct in assuming that? That the work continues?
They are continuing.
Yes. I mean, there, no one's told them to stop work even at this point. So if it was a month from now that it came before us, they would still be working. So waiting for the opinion, I know it sounds kind of...
Maybe.
No. Well, that's a chance that any developer is going to take, but there is not a, a stop-work order. We're looking for a definition of legal terms to make sure they're where in the boundaries of the law. And it's unfortunately, as Ms. Shertler stated, this is not specific to Ironside, it's just the process. The timing was just off.
And I tried, and I tried to get this answered the last meeting, and we had several meetings canceled, so it's an issue that I've had a hard time articulating, and I think I have articulated it, and I just, I remain very concerned.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Dya?
So let's just say that this wasn't an issue right now, and we were to, what would our options be? That we would leave the record open, perhaps?
Not, it's a public meeting, so there would not be a, a record being left open. It would just be, I guess, would a deferred...
Well, no, no, I'm saying if this wasn't an, an issue, we could have, it's a public meeting, so the public has the right to make a comment.
It's not a public hearing.
But it's not, it's not a public hearing.
It's just a meeting that's open to the public.
It's just a public meeting. The public can testify, if that's correct.
Yeah. I don't think anybody signed up to it, but they can.
Can I make another comment? If I had vested money in this particular business transaction, I understand what Ms. Shertler's saying, but that's my money that I'm putting on the line, and I'm not going to spend anymore if the definitions are made clear, and then I can't do anymore. Because the developer pays a lot of money to buy that piece of property, and from what staff's telling me is that they've gotten the permits, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mudd and Ms. Kelly, and they're moving forward, yes, but if we come back with definitions and they're not in sync with things, then they, they've continued the work, yes, but they're investing a lot of money in this project. And what do they do if, if it's, if it's denied?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that question directly, but your, your point is well made. To clarify, on the permits, they have essentially a tentative approval of their infrastructure permits. They haven't been issued yet, but they're nearing the finish line on that.
So they're on the downside, then? Is that correct on the permits side?
In a manner of speaking, yes.
Which is, I think, all the more reason why it's important to make sure we're doing it correctly, so that there isn't, become an issue later on, saying, well, this should never have been approved.
Well, 19 months ago, with the exception of one member, we unanimously approved this.
Yes, but that, we're not talking about a preliminary plan approval. That, that plan met the criteria of SB 236.
Right. All we're talking about is extending it.
Yeah, we're talking about extending it. And...
I don't understand the problem.
The question is, because when you look at extensions, one of the things we're supposed to look at with extensions is whether applicable laws and zoning have changed that would require changes to the plan. Applicable law and zoning has changed, because SB 236 has been enacted.
But I agree with staff's opinion that they're grandfathering.
I, and I, and you know, honestly, particularly given how much effort and work that has been done on this project, I hope, I want to believe staff as well, but I would like to get a legal opinion on it, because there, as Ms. Leobold says, we've got two different words that have two different definitions. I'm not a lawyer. This email we received doesn't, doesn't document where in the text to look for it, and I just, you know, before we go for, I mean, I, you know, I was hoping there was somebody who's going to say, yeah, page 25, paragraph 2, it says right here. But that wasn't provided, and so that's all I'm asking, is to get a legal opinion so that we don't vote on this without the information we need to make an informed decision.
Okay. So is there any other discussion? Anyone wants to chime in? Okay. So we will be able to get that opinion, and by the... So we will be able to get that opinion and by the next meeting, by May 7.
You do have other extension requests coming up, and I believe that since this is something that, as I understand, could be an issue in any of the others that come before you, I just want to make sure it is that we're clear on the path to go forward, so that we're not making examples of any one project.
Okay. All right. And again, this is not specific to the extension that we are looking at tonight. This is the process, not the project. So moving forward, you would probably need this information again. So, I'm sorry?
Do we need to vote on it?
We do need to vote. I was just explaining, that's okay, that I'm trying to make it clear that we're not voting on Ironsides. It's the process of extensions.
Can we hear the motion again?
Sure. The motion has been made that the Planning Commission defer a vote on the request for extension of preliminary subdivision plan approval, Ironsides Escape XPN 05-0015, until the county attorney's office provides the commission a legal opinion on whether, A, the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, which is SB 236, is an applicable ordinance to be considered in evaluating a request for a preliminary subdivision approval extension, and, B, a preliminary subdivision plan can continue to be grandfathered from the provisions of SB 236 if the project has not met the state's two-part test to claim a vested right. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I think we need a roll call vote on this one.
Okay. And it would be, sorry, I'll make my surprise. Ms. Daye?
Four.
I'm sorry?
Four.
Okay. Mr. Bowling?
Against.
Ms. Schertler?
In favor.
Mr. Vaughn?
For.
Mr. Magoon?
Opposed.
Ms. Sharad?
Marquell.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Marquell?
Four.
And at this, and at this point, there are four votes, four, two against, so the motion passes, and we will wait for the legal opinion for May 7.
Ms. Scher, can I make a...
Is your mic on?
I'm assuming, I'm sorry.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Is it possible, I mean, I'm assuming you just said that you would be able to provide us that explanation at the next... Prior to the next meeting. Prior to the next meeting. I know that we already have an agenda for the next, is there a way that we can put this project back on?
Um...
I mean, we've already had the brief, so at that point, it would just really be making the order.
Right. I think that, like, it was under the impression that we would do this together.
I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah. That once we have a legal opinion, then we can make the vote whether or not to extend. So this will appear again on May 7.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, that that will be on May 7, that we will have this project back, so the applicant will know.
And Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to commend staff on a wonderful report.
Yes. I did earlier today, too, that it was a lot of detail, and it was great to be able to have the ordinance and the regulations right there. We didn't have to hunt for anything. So I liked the new staff report. Thank you, Mr. Magoon.
Mr. Magoon.
Yeah. Okay. So let's move on to our next item.